Okay, I'd like to call the City of Ocean Shores Frontline Commission meeting to order. It is Tuesday, June 11th, 2024, 5:00 PM. We're in the Ocean Shores Library on Point Brown Avenue in Ocean Shores. Do the roll call now. Commissioner Berry?
Here.
Commissioner Bees?
Here.
Commissioner Blomis? Here. Commissioner?
R?
Here.
Here. Commissioner Ward is not here. He got stuck in Seattle. So I would like a motion to excuse his absence from today's meeting.
Motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
All right.
Approval of the meeting agenda? Do I have a motion to approve the meeting agenda?
Motion.
The motion?
Yes, sir.
Do you have a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Approval of minutes? Any changes to the minutes?
Motion.
I have a couple of that.
You have a couple.
Are you doing this?
Okay.
Yeah. So in there, there was a list of discussion items at the bottom, which we never really got to. So strike the discussion, general provisions and definitions. We did not have that.
See that right here?
And I'd like to correct Vida's name on the minutes. V I D A instead of V E D A. With those changes, do I have a motion to approve the minutes?
I'll make the motion.
Do you have a motion?
Second.
All in favor? What should Carrie's? Okay, this time, I'd like to do public comments. Uh, any public comments from inside the house? No public comments?
Fine.
Okay.
Thanks, you guys, for donating all your time and trying to take care of it.
Okay, well, we do the best we can, that's for sure. Yes, sir.
I did try to, you know, tourism. I said, I just want to put 3 million on the 17900 budget city.
Super, alright, thank you. Can you read, it was 1.3 million? That's the in, total income from for tourists, that's 17. Sales tax, okay. Sale, that's just the sales tax, okay. Thank you.
Okay, any other public comments from afar? Yes, Vida?
Hi, Mark, I just wanted to say thank you for correcting the minutes. Appreciate it.
Any other comments from afar?
Thank you, Mark, not at this time.
Okay, thank you. Hey. Membrane structures is the next thing on our agenda. I had invited Roy Simmons to join us today to talk about membrane structures. Carrie, would you like to talk about it? I've read your report last, last meeting. And so would you like to express what you did with that?
Sure.
And anything else?
I, you bet, you bet. I searched the web far and wide for stuff and it ended up really with the International Building Code, because that's what we adhere to here. Um, and the current vision version of that is 2021, even though we're in 2024. They're always kind of little because they're iterating back and forth on what really needs to be in and what needs to be out or what needs to be changed. So the one thing that I found, at all codes, they can be really frustrating to look at because they don't just say, this here, it's clear. This is exactly how it is, verbatim, and it's a done deal. International Building Code is absolutely no different. And they do call out a lot of terminology that if you're an expert, like our building inspector is, you would probably catch on to that enough. Um, so the big thing that I see in all the information that I've read is that the membrane structures as we have them and we're discussing them are really an IIB category of building. And the International Building Code says that that is for commercial and industrial uses. So then you try and find out, what do they look at as commercial? There's no clear definition on it, I can tell you that right now, having spent a couple of hours just trying to look in, in real clean, you know, this is what it is. Um, but they do make mention that the only way a membrane structure is allowed to be, even on a semi-permanent basis, is if it's for agriculture or for nurseryman work, and only in areas where the public are not allowed. But other than that, there is no clarity really on what it was. So I was gonna make the suggestion that we have Roy or Roy Simmons, our building inspector, come in. We also may wanna reach out, um, to the state and see, will you come and give us a talk? I think that they'd be really, really willing to, and if you want me to, I can go ahead and see if I can make that contact.
That would be nice. The other thing that I have thought of is asking the fire to come by. Because that, as I was reading through it as well, the, the fire issue, it's listed there, it has to, you know, comply with fire code. And so not only the International Building Code, but also the fire code. And it would be interesting, I asked Roy, he said he was busy, he said he could stop by, and he only had 30 minutes. And so that's why I put it at the first part of the agenda. And then, uh, obviously, he got stuck somewhere, and that's fine. So, but I thought in doing my research for this today, that having the fire department input would also be good.
I think what would, would in addition be really useful to us is, I know that the information that you provided from the manufacturer so that it meets fire code, that's probably when it's brand new. How do these things age over time? You know, how do those surfaces become brittle? How do they degrade in sun, wind, rain, salt? All the things that we have in our environment here. I actually don't even know if there's been anything done about that.
That's, that's exactly why I thought having the fire folks here to maybe answer that. When, when they did the inspection and the permits, obviously, it was fine. But now, the one at Ocean Forest has been there since the pandemic. Does it still meet those codes, given the time? But I'd like, I'd like an opinion of somebody other than, you know, my experience, which is zero in that regard.
We actually may even need a materials engineer to give us that input because the fire department may not know. I mean, don't know how much trouble they may have done on it. But I, I think those, to me, are, are the big kind of technical issues to get clarity, right? And, and I think that, um, the state can help us if they'll have somebody come in. I think we can give enough notice to, to do that, and it would be Ellen and I who I'd work with.
And I'll extend back to Roy for our next meeting.
Yeah.
So you can get in there.
Because again, it's clear as mud.
It's, it's very vague, and that's why it's, it's that. To discussion like we're having. Uh, Thor, welcome aboard, I've noticed you made it.
Must be muted.
Danny just messaged me and said Roy's on his way.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so Thor is in attendance, so.
Okay, well, I'd like to elaborate on the IBC code, because I actually have it right here. And I think, I think you might be, I know it's kinda hard to, you really gotta weed through this to see it, but I, I think, uh, as far as that it's only used, that permanent structure more than 180 days can be only be used for agricultural storage. Um, that's not how this reads here. It says, right, it's pretty clear, jet in general, 31 point, 3102.1 general regarding membrane structures. It says here, uh, it, it says this section applies to air-supported, air-inflated, membrane-covered cable, membrane-covered frame, and tensile membrane structures, collectively known as membrane structures erected for a period of 100 days or longer. Those erected for a shorter period of time shall comply to the International Fire Code. Membrane structures covering water storages, facilities, water clarifiers, water treatment plants, sewage treatment plants, greenhouses, and similar facilities not used for human occupancy are required to meet only the requirements of 3102.3.1 and 3102.7. So that would mean that's, these are, those structures that are, that is specifically for non-human occupancy. So that means the rest of the structures here, if, as long as they meet these requirements, are for human occupancy.
But it doesn't really, it doesn't clarify that, I mean, and that.
Well, it's, it's pretty clear right there. I mean.
I don't rate this being clear at all. I mean, it says that these have to meet these sections and this criteria and these sections.
It says, it says that the, the, the ones that are not for human occupancy are only required to meet these two different sections, 3102.
Correct, to the lower.
But which, which is the lower standard, which means the, if this, if it meets all the rest of the IBC codes listed in here. And, and I'm keeping an open mind on this, I'm right now, I'm on the fence, but, you know, as, as far as what I'm reading here, the IBC code permits it for human use. And I mean, I don't know why they would build structures like the one at Ocean Forest if they weren't intended to be for more than 180 days.
Well, if you look at all the other cities, they've all come down.
So.
So, so, so that, that's where I say, to me, it's really unclear. And I think other cities, if you can go out and read Seattle and a bunch of other, they've all had to take them down because they're interpreting it as it doesn't. So that's.
Well, I spent 15 years in the construction industry, and that was my biggest thing, was reading specs and code.
Correct.
And so, so, and, and to me, it's pretty clear. Okay, I, I think as long as it is a, is, as long as, and now, how many pre-manufactured membrane structures, I mean, we know the one at Ocean Forest meets code, or, or met code at the time it was delivered. You could have the same argument about any structure as far as fire thing, you know, over time, they, the fire resistance wears away, or could be, you know, wood dries out, and that, so.
But it also says that, right, as an IIB type structure.
Right.
Right?
Well, but buildings are IIB structures too, I mean, commercial or.
Well, but that's it, commercial, so.
Well, a, 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 restaurants, commercial, commercial is any entity that's conducting a business.
Correct.
Well, we have, yes, if I, I'm just a lot here. Um, welcome, I appreciate you taking some time out of your busy schedule. Uh, I know that she needed roller skates, but you came from somewhere, I'm sure you're heading to somewhere else.
Man falling off my knees.
Yeah, exactly. So, Roy, we're talking about membrane structures.
Sure.
And the, the IBC, the fire code, you know, about 180 days and greater. Ocean Forest has come up, the, the structure there has come up in the conversation. And so we thought it was in our best interest as a community to get your feelings on temporary versus permanent of structures, something similar to that. So what are your thoughts, please?
So these, so it is, membrane structure is the technical term, and you can go straight to the code and say, 31, special construction, and you can go through these different sections and take it to chapter 32. But in these code sections, it basically says membrane structures, tents, awnings, canopies. And so, um, it's very specific. And so the materials that are being used in here, and that's also mentioned in here in examples, is that those are for horticultural buildings. You can use these tent structures for storing soils. You know, City of Bonnie Lake, where I worked, they had, uh, basically concrete wall, quonza huts with a tent structure over the top, and they stored soils and did different things there for sanderos and that. Um, wasn't really made for an A2 or an A3 occupa, you know, occupancy, so that's restaurant, so occupancy. So in our codes as well, we also have the municipal code where it talks about events. And so like the city, uh, was donated a tent from Boyhood, and we use that for events, you know, sand and sawdust and these different things. And, and that, and it's temporary in, uh, in nature, it's temporary the way it's built. I, I would wonder, uh, if there was way to a six. Um, UV rays break down everything. And so as far as, we deal with fire-rated drywalls, fire-rated, uh, plywood, with different things in construction, those all have to be encased in something, siding, roofing, something is covering it. Uh, when they're exposed, it says that on the plywood and on these different materials with the fire retardant that they use on there, can only be exposed outside for a given number of days, right? And so this material that's on there has a flame rating and a flame, uh, spread rating on it and a, and a flame retarder. I'm just wondering how long that stays in place when it's been up and exposed to the elements that we have out here, uh, for not just six months, but for up to three years, I'm thinking. Um, and so it, uh, I'm not sure how it got like it, it is, you know? Heard some stuff about COVID and different things.
Right.
And I, I worked in City of Bonnie Lake, and we had several, have those go up for restaurants to increase the spacing, but we also had several of them. Uh, we had an 85 mile an hour wind event, and then took them out in the middle of Highway 410, so if you're near Bonnie Lake, you've got a 40-foot blob working its way across the main highway. And so, uh, so these things, again, uh, the idea was not to, um, have a tent be a permanent structure. So if, if you wanna go down the road of a permanent structure, permanent structures require permanent bathrooms. Permanent structures require full ADA compliance. Permanent structures require electricity. Permanent structures in the A, in the A2 and A3 use require sprinklers. If you have sprinklers, you have to heat them. Heat is not a propane heater or an extension cord plugged into the side of the building. So I, I, I take issue with that particular place only because I went there to do a safety inspection, and the plug that was inside of the wall, if you look on the left side of the building, the scorch mark is still there. And the plug was almost on fire, they were told not to use an extension cord. It's, it doesn't meet the electrical code, certainly doesn't meet the building code, and it didn't make the fire marshal happen either. So when you go into this code, it talks about temporary uses. And so, uh, as the building official, I would be, um, you know, the, the most extreme use that I, you know, did, you know, time in this kind of use would be 180 days. However, I, you know, with the previous mayor, we had talked about that, and I wanted to go with less. Um, and then, you know, when there's an event, you know, you can do that. But having that up year-round, um, I know that's not the intent of the code, and it wasn't the intent of the structure, the structure is not meant to be.
So Roy, is there any, any way in your mind that you could think of that a structure like that in Ocean Shores could be permanent?
Okay, so if, uh, yeah, you put metal, you know, it's in a commercial zone. So it's 175210, doesn't really address the commercial zone. So you could put a metal roof on. And, uh, in, in my, my belief is that that, that was, and that was proposed to the ownership. And, um, and I was actually told by one of them, uh, that they were gonna pursue that and come in in March, and, and let's, you know, do this. And, you know, we're well beyond March now, and I haven't seen anybody, so.
So just for clarification, thanks for humoring me. So if they met certain standards, then they would be allowed for a permanent rather than less than 180 days?
They could, and so, uh, so it would be, uh, in my mind, similar to forks and taps. You're on the back patio, right? So that's got fire, uh, it's, uh, it was built with the fire code, it was built with the building code, it's a permanent structure, it's got a real roof structure over it. And, uh, and that, to me, meets the code. Again, it's still seasonal, because nobody's gonna be sitting out there in the winter. They don't have heat for those, um, that's, that was sustained in the winter. They do have radiant heat, uh, up above, and that was all permitted in the, in the camp called code, the building code. Um, but when you start stuffing a lot of bodies into a confined space, um, and in, in a A2, uh, I mean, the spaces can get, as long as there's seating and aisleways, you can, the density can get down to about 15 square feet per person. And if you have an 800-square-foot building, do the math, you know, you've got a lot of people in there. And, and that rest of the bar got permitted, it was permitted with a single bathroom, with an occupant load that it should have never been allowed. So, or for every so many people, that's in chapter 29 in the plumbing code in IBC. And it will spell out to you that, you know, for every so many bodies, you have to have a lathe, and you have to have water. And it addresses both sexes, however you wanna look at that. It says men and women, and so there's two separate bathrooms, we have one. So now we've got honey buckets that don't meet the code, don't meet the intent of the code, and that's what we're using right now year-round.
That was gonna be my question, Roy, do, do honey buckets count as a?
It's temporary, it's an event, it's one event. Yeah, in the plumbing code, it's a permanent portion of the building, yeah, within the structure. So you can also look in the municipal code too, you can get into these accessory buildings, like, you know, um, you know, some of these places have storage containers. And you go to Lumberyard, uh, if you're a horticultural building, Ace Hardware, these can have separate structures because that's part of the common use of having these structures in, on the property. The idea, and I'm dealing with IGA right now, although I'll be going to a hearing, uh, is they put a bunch of storage containers outside. Well, our municipal code was meant, I believe, in my, my mind, it was actually written to encompass everything within walls of that business. So if you have IGA, put an addition on IGA, if you have, you know, whatever, put an, add on to the building, and everything is under that roof and under those, in those walls. Having a separate structure out there, the accessory structure, um, that's not typical to that type of use if you have an A2 and A3 use, uh, which is bars, restaurants, and that type of thing. Those aren't typically, don't have a typically separate, uh, uh, building that's associated with it. It's generally, it's the bar or the restaurant, or whatever it is. So there's a few things here that kinda, uh, rub me in the wrong way, I would just say. But, um, just sticking to the building code, which is where I live and, and breathe, it's not a safe building the way it is today. Um, and you can say that, you know, you can have your, um, engineer say that it meets the wind zone and all of that, which it, which it does. And again, goes back to the temporary use. But as far as bathrooms, fire ratings, all of these different things that would come into play, bathroom, ADA, uh, all these, all these things, they, you know, I've been in there a few times, and, and every time I go there as an inspector, there's no electricity in there. But then I drive by at night and it's fully lit up. And so, um, I have other, I have some other concerns with that as well. But, but again, if, if the intent is to do that, and, uh, and the City of Ocean Shores, and the municipal code wants to change that so that, um, every business in the B-zone can have a, a tent, or, sorry, membrane structure, technical term. Yeah, uh, I mean, that's, that's really up to you guys, you know, how you want the city to look, but.
Right?
That's good.
Okay, well, I'm, you know, just sticking with membrane structure itself. Not concerned about ocean shore structures or the restrooms, just to the code there. We were just having this discussion before we walked in. Technically, the code does allow these as structures.
They, how much structures is ten as?
No, 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 it's, it's not 32, 3102.1.
Yep.
Says, says, uh, and I, and I'm just reading the code, I'm not, like, I'm keeping one way or the other. I'm not, I want, I like to deal in facts. Okay, 3102.1 general states specifically membrane, uh, says air-supported, air-inflated, membrane ca, covered cable, membrane cover frame, uh, to blah, blah, erected for a period of 90 days or longer. Okay, which is, which is, yeah, that's, that's not temporary. Okay? The, those erected for a period of shorter time shall comply to the fire, International Fire Code. Membrane structures covering water source facilities, water clarifiers, water treatment plants, sewage treatment plants, greenhouses, and other similar facilities not used for human occupancy.
Right.
Are required to meet only the requirements of 3102.3.1 and 3102.7. Okay, so that means if it's for human occupancy, it has to meet all the, all the codes that are in this section. And it, and it states here in 3102.3 that non-combustible membrane structures shall be classified as a class IIB or 2B or construction, which is commercial or industrial. So Ocean Forest is a commercial in business, same there. So as far as I'm concerned, the IBC code, you know, and I've been, I was in the construction industry for 30 years.
Sure.
And that was my big thing, is reading specs and making sure that my company was complying specs. I don't see anywhere where it references that as a temporary structure. And, uh, because it does say here that the, they, tensile membrane structures and air-supported structures, including permanent and temporary. So, so this does refer to permanent and temporary structures. So, so by, by reading that, I think the quote, IBC code is explicit that it can be a permanent structure. Now, what we want is permanent structures, another thing, but the code sets it.
It's a permanent structure in particular use. So if you wanna get really technical, and you wanna talk about high density, right? So you would go to like a concert, you could go to the Emerald Queen, and that's an inflatable, that fits under this code. That's an inflatable structure. But it's also got fire, uh, everything is addressed by fire, everything's addressed for that occupant load, everything is addressed for the bathroom counts, all of that's a permanent structure in an, in an A.
But it's, it's also compliant to other codes as well as IBC. Fire code, I'm just, I'm just saying the IBC code.
But, but I would also tell you, since you've been in, in construction, this isn't the only code book, it's the IBC. So I have two other reference books, and it will tell you the intent of the code and why the code is what it is. And I would ask that you read back through those chapters as well. Then I have those available.
Okay, I'd, yeah, I'd like to look, because I would just refer to the membrane structure code itself, right there.
But, but you could say, you could, again, it's for permanent use as certain uses. Not a permanent use as an A2. We don't allow, you know, a yurt doesn't meet the building code. Uh, you couldn't get through the energy code, especially the 2021 code, uh, in a yurt. And so there's some, could you do rammed earth buildings? Yeah, could you do yurts? Yeah, there's different things that you can do in the code. Um, but can they be used for an A2 occupancy? No. And so, um, given the square footage, it may not trigger sprinklers. It would be right on the border, and that would be up to the fire marshal. But again, if you're putting sprinklers in there, it would be a dry system, or it would be a heated building. And so, um, again, if, uh, we say that we want to make this, could I get this through the code as a tent? Uh, I can't, I can't, and, and I would, as the building official, I wouldn't.
Roy, can you explain to us a little bit about the difference between a B2 and a A1, I think you said?
So these different uses, so go into different kinds of structures. So like a 5B is our typical here, um, you know, it's a wood construction, it, uh, and it is flammable. It doesn't, uh, these are items that burn. In a 2B, which some of this meets the code and some of it doesn't. So if you're saying you're using non-flammable material, how long is it non-flammable? I couldn't tell you. Um, I, that would be my first thing.
But it applies to any building material, how long is it?
Well, it does, but when you're saying it's a 2B, uh, you're getting into the less flammable, right? And so, uh, because you have metal frame and a concrete floor, that's not considered flammable. When you say that your tents, you know, the tent or the membrane that's covering that is non-flammable, I think that's not true. I would contest that. I would, I would, uh, for me to get my mind around this, I would have to test it. And, and, uh, these things are not meant to be out and open, like fireworks stands, all these different structures, they're fire-rated, you can put them out temporarily. Um, they're in and out of the UV rays, they do what they do. But I would wonder how long in a fire-rated.
But if it meets the, the, the IBC code that's stated in the struc, in here, which apparently the, the Ocean Shores one does, did at the time that it was put in. Well, so, I, so, I mean, it's, well, obviously, it was, it was had to buy somebody at the, the manufacturer.
So from the manufacturer, that material went out there. Yeah, it came out as a fire-rated material. So, uh, but I would tell you, it was not permitted, uh, without arm twisting. It wasn't permitted without COVID. It wasn't permitted, it was a 180-day permit. We're here three years from now, you know, three years, 180 days, what it was permitted for. I got them into a permit, they went to the mayor, it came out of a permit, I had to refund their, their permit fees. So not, none of this was me. Um, Michael, the, the previous building official, you could interview him as well, and he would tell you the same thing. If you read his analysis on it, it was a temporary structure, it was never meant to be a permanent structure. So, and I've asked Westport, I've reached out to them, asked the building official there, I'm, I'm just wondering if I've missed something, but how is it that you're allowing this in the same occupancy? And he goes, we're not. Screamed a few words into the phone and hung up on me. So, and I, I called him back several times, and, uh, and, and I think he's under the same, uh, I think he's under the same.
But aren't they in the same battle there as, kinda like they are here? Because I've been over there, and that particular tent is entirely different as far as structure than this one is, but it's still up, up along the time of the year unless the weather gets really inclement because of how they anchor it to the ground.
Right, I've, I've never seen it or been over there. I just had somebody call me from, I'm in a tent, can you tell me how this was allowed? And I said, well, I can't, I can't see how that was allowed. And, uh, and so I called the building official. And so I called the building official and he wasn't happy that I was. I wasn't challenging him, I was just asked, you know, I'm just asking the question because I don't know everything, I. On the, on the tsunami chapter, I reached out to twenty building officials. And it's like, where are we with this and what, you know, where am I looking and what code section like? Uh can I find exceptions for certain things and and there, and there wasn't.
Well, Roy, that's exactly the issue that I keep getting hit with is. Well, I drive to Westport, they have these, why can't we have these? And that was the basis of my question is what do we need to do? Well, obviously, Westport, they have their own municipal code, we, I mean. That's, that's maybe not us, but what can we do?
I would just say, if you're gonna tell me that that's a permanent structure and you wanna play uh through the code book and try to dance through that. Then provide me a full electrical, like, show me where this meets the energy code, which it could never. And then get me through the fire code with that. And uh I would just tell you, the energy code wouldn't allow that structure, it would allow it as a temporary structure.
Well, even, even being with the, with the fire rating on it, that there supposedly was at the time. With the elements we have here in Ocean Shores and being out in those elements for four years, it goes from here to here, right out the door.
It, it would be my first challenge to that, um if somebody wanted to come with, you know, come at me with that, and it's like, then have it tested. Because uh again, paint doesn't last out here more than six years without chalking out. So I, I, I um, and that's a coating. It's not sewn into the, it's a, it's an applied coating, so I, you know what this aired up, so that would be my first, you know, thing, but. Could you try to challenge that, you could try to through the code, but again, as a building official, I, I, I wouldn't be dragging.
Roy, do you know if Ellen and I have some opinion or guidance or anything, because we have basically adopted. What Washington state is adopting, so we can be more conservative than that, but we can't be less without violating state law too.
Right, and so Labor and Industries is not gonna have a rating on, on the, the building structure itself. They will, how it gets electricity, um you know, how all that works. Permanent nature. I just, I just think if you really in your heart wanted to make this a permanent structure, you would make it a permanent structure. And so again, if you wanted to contest uh and want to have a ring as your. Structure, then you need to meet all intents of the code, not just, not just chapter thirty one, we're talking like twenty nine, we're talking uh. Chapter eleven, we're, you're talking chapter nine, we're gonna work our way through the code book, which I do on every structure that comes into the city. And so um you can't really just say this is, you know, allows it.
Well, I think there might be others who are looking and thinking, you know, I would really like to do that. With my business. And so, okay, that's great, but. Is it possible, and if it's possible, what are the requirements then that you need to look at? To make it happen so that it works as opposed to not working? Cause there is an expense for a business to try to do this. And so, but you, it's one of those, you don't wanna do it and then have someone say. That doesn't work for you, you gotta, you gotta tear it down.
Well, that's, that's kind of what happens with southern building, they never got a permit and they built the building and then it was stopped. And then go through the process backwards, so that's what happened there, it wasn't that they got permits and all this was allowed, it, it was all worked backwards. So, so in all of that, yeah, uh if somebody came to me and they said, I wanna um. Uh like the electric bicycle shop, I'm going around, if he came to me and said, I'd like to do this with a membrane structure. Um for one, I don't know that that would be able to be your primary structure, right, so it'd be an accessory structure. So uh we'd go through that and it's like, what's the use, what's the occupancy, I'm sorry, the mayor's, yes. Not, but, but I, I, I uh can't, uh but, but it's, and it's an iPhone, I don't have to turn it off.
Can technically advance?
You put it in another room.
But, but um again, uh you just, every product, every project that comes in, if you're doing a bathroom or whatever. It comes in, it's a simple plumbing job, is it, cause you have to have a mechanical aspect with a ventilation fan or not a window, you have to have. And you have safety glass in here in this space, and so everything that comes in has to be transferred the sieve of. The code, and so it's not just the one particular code, it's the entire book, and so. Generally, I'll find myself on any given plan that comes in on a commercial project. And I just start by then in chapter three, use and occupancy, and I start my way through the code book. And it, and I just do it a consistent way every time. And and I'll find, uh you know, sometimes it does allow things and sometimes it doesn't, but. I would tell you the challenges are gonna be in keeping up with the rest of the code, cause I'm not gonna let you quit plumbing into a building. Um and we talk, and I've met with them several times and contractors over there, you're not gonna put plumbing into a building that's not protected. So it's not insulated, and if you're heating it, it's gotta be conditioned, and the conditioning takes you into the energy code and. And all these things, so there is a way to do it, you could, um you could have it, just like, um I talked with Bennett's before. And uh and so they're, one of their ideas up there was to put in a um a, a big can metal canopy. And 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 then the food trucks would surround that, and then you would go inside and you'd have a covered place to eat. And and that by its nature is, you know, people aren't in there all the time, you know, but they're during the meals or whatever. They're, they're using it and it doesn't, it's an outdoor structure, it's just for weather. And uh and the intent is not to uh provide electricity on these other things to it, but it's to accommodate people so that they're out of the element. That, that I could get my mind around and it's a full metal structure and built and and designed and engineered to be a permanent structure, and so. Uh there, there is a pretty short way to get through this with what they have.
So Roy, would that be a conditional use then for?
So, so again, when you're talking about use and occupancy and then what is this building gonna be, is it a temporary structure? Is it a structure that's being used, you know, uh as an outdoor uh roof structure, because you can have pavilions and you can have these things that are. Um you know, that are outdoors, those are allowed in, in the code. Um but those are permanent build and they generally have, you know, real, uh pretty stout roof on them and. And a form of heat, electricity and all of the amenities, you know, that type of thing, could you, um could you again, uh cause I talked to him about it, um. Could, with that occupant load, I believe it was um. Run the math on it, but I, I believe it was uh invented like eighty, is what I wanna say, uh and stuffing that many people in there's um. To me, in a, in a tent is a scary proposition, so I, um again, asked the building official. And and that is stated in several places in chapter one, if I'm not uh comfortable with assembly or I'm not, I'm not comfortable. Uh with uh uh a particular building or style of building, I don't have to approve it, but I. But I would, I would tell you, the fire marshal has the same ability and the same rights, so any time something looks, smells or tastes. Uh unsafe, you know, uh I have the ability to, to, to step in there. But again, if you wanna present to me, they have presented nothing. You wanna come to me and present me with, this is what our plan is, this is what we're doing, we've spent some time in the code and this is how we wanna do a thoughtful approach. Um you know, we could work through that, but uh folded your arms and not doing anything or producing anything or handing me. My job is not to build your application for you or build your permit for you or build your plans for you. In fact, I cannot have any part of that, and so you, you bring it in to me, I review it for code and then I inspect it for code. But I don't invent it, I mean, but I, I did have some ideas, I did tell them. Different things that they could do and and they could get, you know, I, I believe. With not a lot of expense, of course, not many money, I mean, I, I, you know, everybody has money or doesn't have money, but it's like. Uh it seemed like a small amount of money that they can get through it.
Certainly appreciate you being so candid, any other comments?
My, my only concern was I was there in a, at a function when there's a fair amount of people was. Being in the construction trade for over forty five years with the use of extension cords, and you're telling me there's current marks around the reception, cause I'm surprised you haven't red tagged it yet, cause that's a. And the fire department hasn't red tagged it, because that's a real, no, no.
Yeah, no, originally, when we, when we did the safety, they pulled all the cords out while we were standing. Pull it all out, everything comes out, replace that, you know, replace the outlet and you can't do this anymore. And uh so we do our safety inspection, um if you can see my schedule and the date, um getting back around and. And uh and counting things, I've, I've got uh about twenty five. Houses and and basements that are circling around me, but I'm the only building inspector, the only plan reviewer, the only building official, so. So I'm a, and and currently the only permit check, so I'm a. A little busy, but yeah, I would love to stop in there, um I just did an inspection there on the decks that were built, the newly built decks. And while I was there, I walked around the other side and everything was unplugged and pulled off the building, so. So, you know.
That's cause they knew you were probably gonna be there.
Well, they scheduled the inspection. I mean, at the very least, they, they, what they, you know, they need to do, but I, do I, how about it, yes, man?
So right at that point in time, it, it really wouldn't be considered membrane structure, but have more of a permanent roof and stuff like that. It takes it to a different level, cause our, our goal, I believe from the mayor, is to try and figure out, is there cost effective structures? That we can use in the city of Ocean Shores to help owners. Maybe build something where they can get people into it, but still gonna be safe, but gonna be really cost effective at the same time, I think at the bottom line, that's really what we're.
Trying to provide an opportunity for those that would like it, right now, the code is, is difficult. So people go, I can't do, well, is there a way to provide an opportunity for businesses who might like to go down there? And you're telling me there's a chance, but.
There, there is, but, but again, uh most of the businesses, and I don't wanna, to be doom and gloom. But most of the businesses come in the winter months, you know, there's more um hotel worker cars up from the hotels than there are. You know, patrons, there's more people uh from the employees in the parking lot than there are stores, unless, you know. Except for the manager, I G A, A S R, where you gotta fill those, but for the most part, um. I, that's why I think the temporary structure thing, there's not really this heavy load. Um it's when the summer comes, when you've got big events that are, and everybody's in town. And yeah, it would be great to capture more bodies and get more plates out there and more drinks served and, and I totally understand that, and uh and that. Backs up the, you know, you can use honey buckets for temporary event, you can do these different things. But three years is not temporary and it was applied for and permitted as a temporary structure and 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 it's being used as a permanent structure and so.
Okay, well, I, I've spent a little time since the last meeting jotting down some ideas about. I'm, I'm keeping an open mind and 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 uh, you know, my goal is not saving the ocean board structure. It's just, just the whole idea in general, because it's, you know. That, that structure is that structure in history and that's whatever it is, okay, so I came, uh I know. Back in January, uh the, the commission had this, a discussion about membrane structures. And there was a lot of written to the mayor suggesting that they could be allowed or they could be allowed as a conditional use. And I think that that idea has some merit to it, uh obviously, we haven't heard back. Marks, we haven't heard it back. So I started thinking about, okay, if, if it were me wanting to allow something where I would feel comfortable. Um first of all, um I had some ideas here, first of all, it has to meet all the codes. Just not, not only I B C, but the electrical codes, any other codes, if you're gonna put electric in it. Um it has to be outdoor, outdoor electrical requirements and that, um. And ano- another thought was that it's only allowed as an accessory structure to an existing permanent structure.
Thank you.
I, I would not wanna see a, be a big one lot. With all it has is a membrane structure as its business. Or on, on the other, another thing I would not wanna see is, cause I could see this coming, cause we got the food trucks now. I got a food truck parked on my lot and now I want a membrane structure. So I can have an indoor eating facility for my patrons, uh no. Uh it's, to me, it, it needs to be a, an accessory structure to, it has to be a complement to an existing.
It has to be because of the chapter twenty nine, so you get into the bathroom counts.
And that's another thing too, that, you know, so, so, so and the, and the permanent structure, while there's, while there, we, we got two different uses over here too. We got uses for storage and agriculture and that, like, like, uh you know, if you got a construction site and you want. A str- a, a membrane structure to have your building materials, you know, that's, to me, that's different than. The commercial use, okay, if it's gonna be allowed as. For example, I know the ocean port setup where it's in addition to my restaurant or bar like Bennett's or something. Okay, it, the, the permanent structure has to have restroom facilities and it has to be big enough facilities. For, not only for this building structure itself, but the, in, in addition to the membrane structure. I think, uh, I'm, I'm really don't wanna, would not wanna call it a permanent use. But I'm like, I, I'm thinking here kind of a, I wanna say temporary permanent? In that, in that, okay, here, so, so say here, for example, um so you get a temporary use permit for one year. Okay, the permit can be renewed every year with inspection from the building department. So basically, you're gonna go out there and inspect it, if there's any tears or if any, okay, it's either gotta be repaired. Or you lose your permit, okay, I just don't wanna see some, like five year olds. Structure out there that's ragged, that's got damage from here and there or. You know, so I, that's why I, I'm reluctant to say permanent, but you know, as long as it meets all the. Inspection, yeah, that's why I like, wanna call it a temporary permit.
Right, okay, but, but again, that's kinda why I like the hundred eighty day thing, cause it's like, you gotta come back in.
What, what, whatever, hundred eighty days, so half years, whatever, but with, okay, with the understanding that's okay. We'll renew your permit as long as it's still in, you've, you've been maintaining the structure. And it also has, has to have adequate ground fastening, uh per the recommended by the manufacturer. By the manufacturer, not state, not like a tent, uh and also the manufacturer would need to s- uh provide a certification that that structure, not. Just their structure in general, but that, that exact structure meets codes. And the other thing I'm concerned about is heat sources inside, okay, if I got a structure and then you put the flaps down. And I don't know how much ventilation these things have, I don't know what they're using for heat over, they use propane, say the towers. That, so is it, are, are we, you know, are, what's the fumes?
Carbon dioxide, carbon dioxide.
Yes, is that, is that, is, is it safer that thing, or, or should be, if they're fully enclosed. Should they be required to have electric heat?
Which then drives the conditioned space, which drives the energy code.
And I think there, it needs to be also be a side, a side restriction for the structure. That it's either no bigger than the permanent structure that's on the site or some sort, you know, in relation to. Oh, I got a little shed here, but I'm gonna put in a ten thousand per square foot.
Right, membrane structure. And, and, and I would tell you, so forks and taps, they can have twenty more people out there than what they have currently. Because I also have control over occupant, they don't have, they're, they're short in bathroom. And so I cut their occupant load down and that's why there's a few chairs, tables up there. So um on these structures, if, like you say, if you were to. Get this, so conditional use goes through planning and then uh for me, it's just, this is what I wanna use this for. I start right in on chapter three, use and occupancy, I start working my way through every structures that way, um. But the, but I would just tell you. You know, the plumbing and the conditioned space, uh that's, that's almost a no go with. They're very technical in, in nature and.
Basically, it's the use of seat. You know, that's how I look at it.
Roy, I appreciate you taking. I think we used more than the thirty minutes of you that you said you had.
All your buddies, pretty much, uh yeah, sure, sure, but.
I appreciate you coming by and providing the insight. And uh can we ask you back at some other point if you can?
Absolutely, and, and in two o'clock works better, cause I'm out on inspection lots and, and that's kinda when I'm kinda slowing down a little bit, but. Yeah, if, I mean, uh so yeah, if you want a further discussion or I can show you some other stuff that I have uh in my office. More than happy to spend some time with you, because I, I, I appreciate the fact that, yeah, you know, you made up your mind. But it's like when you're reading things, sometimes what it looks like is not actually what it, it's saying.
Well, thank you very much, appreciate it. Now, if you go all the way back to your ship, you'll be able, on the mayor's.
Now you go all the way back to your ship to be able, on the mayor's.
Get your roller states back on now and you'll see me there at four in the morning and I'll still be there.
Awesome.
Have a great day.
Hey, thanks, ma'am. Okay, uh, the next thing we have on the agenda is, um, minimum store twenty, this is what we talked about. Last meeting and I sent this forward to the mayor. Um, and somehow we got back on, uh, our agenda page today, but that's, uh, that's been sent forward.
Yeah.
And so the next thing is Ocean Shores theme. Uh, Steve, you wanna, you wanna talk about that?
Yeah, um, well, just, you know, brief summary of what I brought before is, you know, I went. I I looked at different communities that had themes and, uh, what their themes were, the histories I presented at at the last meeting, um. The one thing that I I did point out in common with all these communities is that they have very active chamber of commerce. Or business associations or economic development groups. Um, all of which currently does not exist in Ocean Shores. Okay, so, you know, if if this is going to be a thing, um. It needs to involve the the business community as well as the the residents. And, uh, you know, it has to be a joint thing and everybody needs to be on the same, the the businesses probably. Um, would have the most, you know, impact because they have the most financial, uh. Cost to having a theme, but they may have the most potential rewards from it too, so. Um, so anyways, I started, I I had, I've had a few comments, um. Till I went back and listened to the, uh, last meetings, uh. Oh, the the recording and, um, some comments were made as far as, um. You know, okay, well, you know, we we have, you know, we have all the, we have seventy nine hundred residents, we need, we need to get, you know. See what they want and yes, they they have to have a say on this, um, and also, um. You know, there was a, there was a comment made and I've talked to, there, I hear from different people that live in town here and a lot of people, you know. You you're in a tourist town, but they don't like tourists, they don't really want more tourists and, okay, so, um. So there's that to be said, whether, you know, whether, you know, we're gonna promote tourism, which, uh, or not, and, uh. And also, whether the hotels and the other businesses could even afford to. Because, I mean, uh, black pieces from the seas were way down, so, I mean, it's a two way street, you know, you got, you 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 wanna improve business. But, you know, so you gotta invest in it, but if you don't have the money to invest in it, so I guess. First of all, I don't, I don't really like to, you know, it's been presented as a theme, okay, but I don't think that's really the. The, at this point, the proper, to me, the proper terminology, is we're looking at. A marketing plan for the town of Ocean Shores and in order to do that, um. Well, I know we have some public comment on that.
Right.
Today's meeting, so, oh wait, okay, so, so, um. I lost my train of thought here, so, okay, so, um. So. Where I leave off here. So anyways, we, you know, as far as you don't like the term. Right, okay, I like to, and also, what we need to decide too then is if. We need to decide what I think that what it comes down to is what we really want this town to be. And I'm gonna, instead of a theme, I really think the town needs an identity. Okay, are we going to be a tourist town and promote tourism and try to gain more in tourism? Or are we going to, i- if if it's, if we think it's not there or we don't want it? Um, how, what else are we gonna promote the town? Are we gonna promote the town as a retirement community, as a residential community? Um, I mean, if if citizens are are going to get what they've said they wanted, which are more. Like walking past some improvements in town down. We gotta generate it, you know, you just, you gotta do, you you can't just say, well, let's leave it like it is and then expect. To be able to pay for this, you just can't, okay, so do we, do we, do we market it to? Get more residents here, because I've heard a comment, Gary had mentioned that I had some meeting about four months ago or so. That the town, it's it's, the lots are sixty two percent. Okay, of all lots, so I don't know if that means sixty two percent with actual buildings, which I'm assuming they meant. Or if there's, you know, I'm assuming the camper lots from the town, so that means we have thirty eight percent of this town that's undeveloped. So there's a lot of property tax revenues potential there for people, bring people, we wanna promote the town as that. Um, you know, so I think we need this, we need an identity and I, and there's gonna always be tourism here. But I, do we, are we at the point where maybe the town is oversaturated with hotels? And that's why a lot of them, you know, and I'm sure COVID really hit higher up here and everywhere, but a lot of the hotels are probably beyond. The, there's several of them that have really done a nice job here and they're still working on them and that, but I see the. The one that is says Billy's and under construction, well, it looks like they just quit and everybody left, so I don't know if that's what's happening with that.
Uh, but there's a lot of work to be done.
So there's a lot of work to be done here and I s-. You know, and what what, you know, another thing that maybe we already marketing this town too, if we do wanna develop, have. Bring in resources to, for to help promote tourism and that is. Maybe we need to market this town to investors as well as people coming here. I mean, maybe you need to bring in some outside money to help with their, maybe get rid of some of these old structures. Bring in some people who might be interested in getting rid of these old structures and building new, I mean, most of the structures here were built in. What, the sixties and seventies, the commercial structures?
I think one thing that might be was that we just got listed as one of the most, uh.
Family friendly.
Not family, family, but one of the most cheap.
And and some groups, some groups cut named Ocean Shores as the best family beach vacation, so I don't know what the group was. Okay, I mean, to me, I went last week, I, when the last meeting I presented, to me, that's the most logical theme, if you wanna say theme is family. Beach, okay, but there's a lot of conversation to be had and.
I think we're gonna get some in public comment today.
Well, and I'm gonna just state my opinion right now. I think this forum here is not the place for.
To.
I I believe, um, because it's very limited conversation here, I think. I I have, I have, I now I understand that there's at least a few small. Us building gr- or, uh, business groups that are together, I know there's one group that just got a seventy thousand dollar grant from the L T A.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, which consists, it's a, it's called the, uh, Ocean Shores Marketing Coalition, which consists of the Gray Gull. Ace Hardware, Oy Hut, Bennett's and Tupu.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, they got a seventy thou- alright, so, um. What their marketing plan is for that, I don't know, uh, I understand there's a whole coalition that talks about. Marketing and and theme, um, there's an, there, I'm hearing that there could be several other groups too, well. A bunch of small groups talking separately isn't gonna get anything done.
Exactly.
I think, I think this may need to go back to the mayor's office or or somewhere other than here. And it needs, something needs to, there needs to be a joint.
Oh, I think.
A joint meeting with, you know, since we don't have a chamber, uh, I'm surprised, uh. I'm surprised we don't have an economic development authority or downtown development authority or something like that to. A town like this should have something like that, but, um, and that's where I'm gonna leave it.
Okay, super.
Any other thoughts?
May I, I have a question.
Uh, not, we'll get to public comments and then you'll be ready to go. Um, the next thing on the agenda is transit rentals, um, I made some changes to it, but. I'd really like to table that until Thor is here, uh, for us to. Complete any further discussion on that particular topic, um. Any commission reports today? No, okay.
I'm the Black Day Parade, it was great.
Awesome. Okay, um, public communication, yeah, public comments in the.
Little sorry question, yeah, uh, you you have a lot of great ideas. I received a copy of the minutes, which included your conversation.
Uh, minutes are all.
Recorded online, so if you go under the city website, under Planning Commission, you will see all the recordings. Everything that was here will be there, the minute, probably gonna come out more highlighted, right, they won't be the details.
They're not specific, so you're not listening.
So listen to the recording, it's great.
Perfect, perfect. And Nicole, how long does it take you to get the report enough, generally speaking?
It's Sarah, so far is the one that has control over the, have brains over that yet?
Okay.
Yet.
Yeah. Okay.
Um, cause I'm currently working on another project.
Got you.
Project forward.
Okay.
I get more.
Got you.
Things on my face.
Do you usually take about a week or how's that?
I think that's about, right, cause it's house phase when it falls on and that's.
I understand. But it is a bit of a long one, I saw agenda and reports.
The the second question, why, why don't we have a chamber conference still?
Yeah, um, you, you don't have, to to, if I'm only being honest, we don't have time in this meeting to explain. That, I'll be glad they give you that.
But basically, this is.
I'll decide rather than I relocated. This new. Again, wow, anybody else, please?
P J and I are here representing the Public Arts and Awareness Group, which is one of the small groups that. Steve is probably referring to.
Correct.
But the good news for Steve is that, um, we're all connecting the dots.
Oh, good.
Yeah, so we just saw that you wanted to have the theme comment today in the agenda and we thought that, at least it's. An opportunity to show you something that was presented, um, to the hotel coalition, um, not that long ago. And and we are working within different groups to help connect the dots and certainly through the mayor's office, so. Um, so thanking the, she's got the.
Nice.
Screen up there for you and I I did want to, um, make sure, get you jump in any time, but, um. I wanted you to know that, you know, while while it's such a big project in our minds and we gotta come up with this format or whatever, but in reality. Because we've been here a long time and this book has been so incredible, if any of you have seen this. There's so much history here, so the great thing is, we really do have an identity, so thank you, Steve, that was a great term to use. Um, we're definitely in our history have been known as America's beach town. And, um, in that format, if you will, and then, um, coming back to our beginnings. Uh, definitely, our town was something that was known in, I'll say, the Hollywood style. Uh, to be that, um, uh, Palm Springs of the Northwest, right? And so in reality, if you look around, because I'm a real cheapskate, by the way, I'm PJ Korea and all the BBs, but, um. I'm a real cheapskate and so I don't like to spend money on things when you don't have to. And the cool part is, if you look around our community and the hotel, uh, situation is definitely a piece of this. You look around and you've got these buildings that are definitely from that framework of the era of when this was started. Now, does everybody like the vintage look? I don't know, not everyone, but it is, it is researching, so there is kind of a way to. Build on it, freshen it up and make it look good, so. This is a group called the Ocean Shores Public Arts and Awareness Initiative and all it was, it's a conversation, Debbie, myself. Uh, Anthony Robinson, that you all probably know with, um, definitely his Shane's Art, and I'll make this as brief as possible, but. We were having a conversation and realized that there's so many pieces in our community already that. Were created that way and definitely is a theme, if you will, but it's, doesn't have to be the overall look. It's just there are a number of pieces, so what we did is we pulled together a group and just very informally. We're not a five oh one C three, we have no money, we have no bank account, we're nothing, we're a bunch of people, I'm not an artist, I can't draw my way out of a box. But we have a lot of artists that wanted to just talk about what can we do to beautify, freshen up our community. So there it is, it's a collaboration of artists and involves citizens and seeking to elevate the visibility of the work of our local artists. Both within the community of Ocean Shores and beyond our city, so we welcome everyone, please join us and. That, of course, is the crab in front of the, um. The light came up, okay, so, anyway, um, basically, um. What has happened is we initially just sort of randomly went and talked with the mayor and Scotty Anderson and. Um, I forget, Paul was there, oh, Becky was there, and we said, well, what about this, there's a few pieces that exist already, and so they went, oh. Sitting on the back of the water property back there, and so they said, well, we're gonna do something with, so they did. And a bunch of people got together, they brought it in, they cleaned it up, they refurbished it, and of course, now it's out by the Shiloh. So we got pretty excited about that and, um, Matt Syper, who's a photographer here in town, he graciously. Uh, contacted a lady model, her name is Turtle, that must be her professional name, right? And so she graciously came down and did a little photo shoot, so we sort of recreated. The cover of the book, um, with the plant out there in place, so. That was kind of a fun, exciting, um, thing to do, you know, as an initial kickoff. And then, as you all probably know, the whale sculpture, and I don't know if you know the story, you know, Anthony Robinson had a, an accident and. Um, it it was, it was pretty difficult and a lot of people helped him from our community. And so he actually donated that, um, structure of the whale and that was, I said, gorgeous and and that was inside the, um. Convention center, and so now that was pulled out, refurbished. Um, and I believe the intention is for it to go.
In the circle, maybe, they're supposed to be breaking ground.
And that was something that, you know, just kind of, it also evolved, you know, so we're pretty excited about that, so. Um. Again, it doesn't have to all be, uh, wood structures in any way, you know, there's so many artists here and at the number of meetings we've had. Oh, there's been all kinds of suggestions and things, um, one. Piece to this puzzle, when you look at, let's just say, the hotels, for instance, you've got the gray gull that was developed by a particular architect. And that cannot be changed as far as the architectural structure, um, David was on this meeting that I presented in. And then, uh, Gavin Miller, who maybe a lot of you know from, he works over here, so he's an incredible, uh, designer. He put together some sort of retro, if you will, designs, just to kind of play around with ideas. And some of these pictures were actually taken from, um, some of the older hotels, um, hotels entities. So you can go ahead, Nicole, thank you. Yeah, who says you can't go back, right? I mean, that's the thing that actually retro has become very popular for us in our country, so. Uh, Gavin did a nice thing for me, there's the gray gull on the left, and you know what he did, he put a gray gull, a painted gull, I don't know if you can make that out. On the wall, so that's just paint, so that might be something that David and the Gray Gull could be a part of. And then he kind of plugged in some colored doors, um, then you've got a couple others, uh, that's the Polynesian, um. Oh, the western, the other, the green door, sorry, right now it's pink or whatever, it's fine, you know, it doesn't matter, the the idea was just to get. Sort of a, a thought process evolved. And then, so what's in it for me and my business, and it's simple, it's be a part of the revitalization of this beautiful town. Uh, become a patron for local artists, that's where the Public Arts and Awareness concept was. Certainly, artists like to be compensated for their work, but I will tell you, there are many, many artists. Um, in our group that are more than willing to do things, um, free of charge and we have. Different ways that we could potentially fundraise and so forth, that's our next thing, purple to jump over, but.
There's always those steps.
Yes, there are, yes, there are, so, I mean, I think that with the reality that we were just nominated as. Uh, number ten in the most affordable, uh. Beach town to go to and then, um, I don't remember the group either, but it was the best family friendly beach town, it's pretty freaking impressive.
Alright.
But, but anyway, um, yeah, so.
We've been collaborating with other groups. We've been collaborating with other groups, I've gotten information, it's really hard to get into that marketing coalition to find anything out and be invited to one of their meetings, I've kind of been working on that. We've approached the mayor about having a town hall on this subject and getting your right to the business, that we have to have total buy-in for whatever we choose to do.
And I think as, as we talked earlier, I think the survey at some point, asking the people what they would like.
Yeah.
Because I don't care how you, how you do, we've had some success once, the Parks Board did a survey, it worked really well. We did our walking and biking survey, it worked well, um, and you, you need the buy-in from the people, otherwise it really won't go anywhere, so.
You're absolutely right, yeah. I think some other things that were done as well is we have brainstorming meetings where we invited the public in, particularly around all the tourism stuff, to kind of hone it down to what do we want and those were really well attended. People really appreciated that, um, now, was everybody's input taken? No. Like, just with the process of walking through it, we got down to what our top fifteen or sometimes seventeen, I would think, from there, we took the third one.
I mean, the first meeting we had, we had forty-six people in this, so, I mean, it it was, it was a good turnout. We got a lot of great ideas and then we refined it from there, so.
And just to put out there, PJ did this presentation, presentation to the hotel coalition, and a couple of them have already started hopping on board, Shannon Rookman has made some really cool retro rooms in the hotel and it's true, and inexpensively, bro, what you're saying, there you know, there's no great expense to improve on things that we already have as well as add to.
It's a process.
So we're proud to be able to be here and at least to show you, that's all we intend to do.
I think that was my point, I mean, it's gotta go outside this, we, this is really not a job for the planning.
Right.
At least that's my.
Any other comments?
Yes, Ian.
Membrane tent.
Yeah.
I think Roy was pretty uh straightforward in all the issues, but not, but again, like I said at the meeting, what is open, how is open to where you want to present?
Right.
And and even you saying we have some other ways to get around this, but those activities we want to be presented.
A great point.
And then the other thing, it was kind of interesting, uh, the membrane ocean pores come on social media and it had a huge fall. And one of the things that that I have the noise level, the noise level of a tent versus a building entirely different, so is that fair for the neighbors?
Good point. Again, I think it's, it's a worthwhile topic to be discussing and if, can we provide an opportunity to businesses who would like to do that? But it's gotta meet certain, obviously fire codes, building codes and, you know, are they willing to do that, the extent it's going to be, but I think it's a definite worthwhile discussion for us.
Yes, there's probably a, you know, that's what I was getting to in my examples, is you know, there's, you know, there's, there could be a place and a purpose for, not, you know, not as a permanent structure or, or, but, you know, okay, but right now it's not anything, so there's like, you know, of this.
And like Roy said, no one's presenting it with a concept. So it can be done, yes, that was clear, but it's gotta be specific and mean all the applicable codes.
And may not in a big membrane, it may be a some other type of open-air
Right.
pavilion, we'll call it, for lack of a better.
Could be, but I, I really appreciate y'all inputting on it because I think there might be folks that would like to do that going forward, I, I mean, I have a little business, so I'm not gonna build, but some business owners might and I think one of our, our jobs on the planning commission is to provide opportunities. And we don't know who's gonna ask or wanna do that, have a thought, but if we provide opportunities, then they can consider, if the answer is no, well then, we, we lose out on that opportunity uh within the city, so I appreciate everybody's input. Anybody else? Dan, we've got this, just, just last thing.
Okay. When we were doing the conflict, we went through the economics of Ocean Shores and two things stood out heavily. Tourism and building, those were the two highest discount cannot live with. So, you know, I, I understand some people like it, to stay home during the weekend.
Any other comments?
I've got one, uh, the other day I was out and there's a pretty good sign on one of the buildings size-wise, it's snowing. So I went into the little strip mall there and there's no shop. So one of the shop owners came out and they said, well, the reason they're not here is uh they were never here. He's coming and working two hours a day and it's awful. And I think that's one thing that we need to stress, the new businesses that's out here, you've gotta have regular hours, even if you don't have regular customers, because that's how you build your and I think another thing that we're lacking by here too is signs special of the day or, you know, I was in restaurant business for a good, there are many reasons, there's reasons for that, you know, and it draws people in, yeah. And if you look at the businesses, they are, they do things. I think if they were gonna start a business, maybe a walk, see kind of what you're up against before you, you know, get the keys to your, your future.
One should do that research before you uh, you go forward.
Hey, anything else? Are there limitations on the type of restaurant business? For example, we have three or four pizza partners. Have we ever considered that trying to allow the existing businesses to thrive versus more competition?
I don't think there is a link as to, you know, uh, a limit of three or four of this or that, no, I don't think so.
I don't even think that'd be legal to do.
Yeah. Any comments from afar? Any comments?
I have no comments, thank you, Mark.
Susan?
Yes, thank you, Mark. First of all, just to comment about the sound when we're listening on Zoom, when people in the room are speaking and sitting far away against the wall, it's very difficult to hear. We were able to hear PJ as she stood up closer to the table, so if you could maybe have an area where the people stand up and come to that one spot, that would be very helpful for us. And in terms of the membrane structure, where do you go from here? I'm not sure that I totally grasped a, a process forward from your conversation today. Will you just be continuing to discuss it? Are you still looking for input from other people? What's the next step for you guys?
Well, I will continue to have the agenda, I will speak to the mayor about what we've discovered since we've been discussing it and then we will, we will come up with a plan going forward. So yes, we will continue it on, maybe get it in fire department in, a state expert, so that we can decide, I mean, Roy was pretty clear today, there's a path forward, but it has to be very specific to meet all the codes. So I think we'll still, we'll still look, look at it going forward.
So if I understand then, this is not just about ocean pores, so we're not looking at having them come in and have a discussion, this is a much broader discussion to make those rules so that anyone else in the future would know what they're up against, what they can have.
Yes, that is my perspective one hundred percent.
Thank you very much. That's all I have, thank you very much.
Okay, thanks. Anything else? Thor, do you have anything? Okay, um, our next meeting will be June twenty-fifth, two PM here in the Ocean Shores Library, the secretary for that meeting will be Commissioner Ward. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Make the motion.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
The meeting is adjourned at three twenty.